Morning, those of you that are here. Chili day. This is the January 23rd, 2014, I think Andrea. We'll fix that. Rapid City Planning Commission Meeting. There any member of the audience wishes to speak to an item on the agenda? There are speaker request forums to the left of the dais. Please fill out the request with the agenda number and item you wish to speak to. Hand it to the secretary and we'll take those in the order in which they're received when we get that item on the agenda today. And we kindly ask that if you have cell phones or other things, beep or buzz or whatever, that you turn them off or to silent. And if you need to take a call, we invite you to step out into the hallway and not share that with the meeting. And Alderman Roberts is here today, standing in for the council. Welcome. Items one and two have been placed on the consent calendar and may be approved by, as a group. Action will be taken on all consent items in accordance with the staff's recommendation by a single vote. Any item may be removed from the consent calendar by any planning commissioner, staff member, or audience member for separate consideration at this time. The findings of planning commission are recommendations to the city council. City council will make the final decision with the exception of the following item. Item two, thirteen PD zero five six. The Rapid City Planning Commission's action on these items are final unless any party appeals that decision to the Rapid City Council. All appeals must be submitted in writing to the Community Planning and Development Services Department by close of business on the seventh full calendar day following action by this planning commission. First of all, let me ask if there are any items, any items one or two on the consent item that somebody would like removed? Commission, any items on the consent calendar, items one or two? Nobody wants any of those off? Now, Tim. Move approval and second?
Second.
Further discussion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. That brings us to the regular agenda. Item number three.
Item number three is thirteen PD forty-nine. This item was continued from the January ninth planning commission meeting to allow the applicant to submit photo simulations of a proposed water tower in the Chapel Valley water tower and design report addressing how the proposed tower will impact fire flows. The applicant has submitted the photo simulations and those have been linked. However, staff does not believe that they genuinely reflect or adequately reflect the dimensions of the tower and are not to scale. In addition, information has not been submitted that supports the need or identifies the benefit for the proposed tower. In order to give the applicant sufficient time to submit the information and for staff to review, staff is recommending that the item be, skip a planning commission and be continued to the February twentieth planning commission meeting. And just want to let you be aware that if additional information is not submitted by February sixth, staff's recommendation will be to deny the application at that time.
May I ask, this has been continued up and based on response from the neighborhood. Who, who is bringing this for? Is this the city's water tower?
No, it's Chapel Valley, or Chapel Lane Water Company.
So the water company, the members are the people that live in Chapel Valley?
Yes.
And the members are not happy with their association with the design that is being brought forward?
And Ted, if you'd correct me if I'm wrong, but I don't believe that this water association serves all the residents of Chapel Valley. No, it does not. So you have some people that are opposing it that are not going to benefit for domestic purposes, but it still go, should, could go to the fire flows. And we've listened to the neighborhood. They've tried in the past to bring this application forward. We knew that the neighborhood would have concerns with it. We certainly, just in a generic review, it appears that it, it should benefit, but we need to bring that information to you. We need to have the applicant bring in engineered information demonstrating what that benefit is. And to date, we just have not received it.
I see. And I think we understand it. This is to continue to the twentieth? I saw move.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. Motion carries. Item number four, the Big Sky Business Park.
Item number four is thirteen PD fifty-two, an initial plan development overlay to construct an apartment complex. This was, item was continued from the January ninth planning commission meeting due to a staff error in the notification requirement. The legal notification has been sent out correctly this time. In addition, there's been a change in stipulation number ten, a revision to it. I'll take you through some slides on what's being proposed. It's a, well, property is located northeast corner of Bernice and Neal Street. And zoned office commercial in the east portion of zoned medium density residential. Currently, it's undeveloped. Previously, we've seen final plan development for an apartment complex on the property to the west, which we've approved. It's a three-story apartment complex, two buildings, sixty-four apartment units total. The applicant is requesting a increase in the height from three stories and thirty-five feet to three stories and forty-two feet. Due to the proposed increased setback from twenty-five feet to a little over fifty feet, staff recommends that the exception be granted for the height. And so I'm taking a look at what's in the neighborhood. Don's Valley Market to the south and west. Stipulation number ten, the applicant has submitted a revised utility plan showing a second connection. And so the stip has been revised to allow, to, to give the applicant some options because the sewer in the area, their original utility plan where the sewer was going to hook up, the, it was at the maximum capacity. And so they've submitted a revised utility plan that shows a different hookup should it be needed. Staff recommends that the plan development be approved with stipulations.
Could you detail the rerouting of the sewer a little bit? If they're not, they're not making the connection on Bernice?
If we could get the engineering, Ted, maybe you could assist us.
The, let me see. Yes, Ted.
I can generically answer that. I don't know the specific plans. I didn't know there was a change from previous applications in this area to serve, or to be served by the Rapid Valley Sanitary Sewer District. In this location, this is city sewer, but then farther to the south and the east is Rapid Valley. And some of the city sewer, city provided sewer, service sewer in this area goes through Rapid Valley's system to get back to the city. This area was, from the previous application look at, needed to be served by city sewer to the west. If they've drawn it up to show that it went east directly to Rapid Valley Sanitary Sewer, there isn't adequate capacity. Kind of what I've heard here is that they need to change that service direction to get directly to city sewer. So it's a, I think it's a minor change, it's doable, but apparently there was some lack of communication or something. Changing engineers and changing design.
And this, and the city system, is that where we put in all the lift and the additional sewer lines along? Well, no, that'd be, be north of there.
There was a, no, there is a large trunk main that's built from Highway forty-four close to the West River Electric new facility that goes up Catron Boulevard. Picks up Copperfield, was tied in to the sewer.
I see.
Like Dan's Valley Market and sets that serves this portion.
Okay.
So there's been some changes, but we're trying to work to rectify some more issues with sewer capacity farther to the east and south cities to separate that sewer that goes through Rapid Valley.
Is that going to be a continuing problem then as we develop further on in that area?
We're working on rectifying it so it won't be, but there is a definite split between Rapid Valley and the city and, and areas that are served in the capacity of Rapid Valley sewer.
Very good.
Mr. Chair, it's my understanding from Nicole Lacy, the engineer that, that has been reviewing this, that there is a city project that's coming forward that should be completed in 2014. Once that is complete, then they could connect their preferred route, which be, would be from DeGeece Drive to Timmons Boulevard. However, if it isn't complete before they would receive a certificate of occupancy, they would then have to make the sewer connection to Neal Street. So long-term, we are working on an overall resolution for the area and they have options. It's just kind of a timing thing. We just wanted to spell it out so that the owner of the project, whoever purchases this and buys the apartments, is aware that there would be capacity issues until that city project is complete.
And then one other request. The way that our pictures come through, when you link the zoning map and the area map and whatever, sometimes, in this particular one, I'm not familiar with Bernice Street and was trying to figure out the location and, on this. I wonder if we couldn't attach, it helped me the minute that you put up the west-facing or south-facing towards Don's Valley Market. Then I understood the neighborhood. So maybe we might be able to link some of the photos so that we can tie those back to the maps that we have on the.
The photos usually aren't available at the time that we send the agenda out to you folks. However, what we could do, which I agree with you, even working here, if I'm opening a file and it's cold, I gotta pull away from it a little bit and see where my arterial streets are. What we'll try to do is in those vicinity maps, is let you see where Outvale Road and Homestead is because the minute you saw that, you'd probably know where you were and we won't make it.
We used to have that kind of map detail.
Yeah, and then at the direction of the planning commission, they wanted to see a little more up close so that they could look at what those local and lane place streets were. We'll find a happy medium.
Okay. Thank you. So back to, what are we looking for here? We are looking for a motion to approve per staff's recommendation on item number four. Motion by Jan, second by Andy. Any further discussion? It does Karen. You've, you've pushed all the right buttons this morning.
I just tried. Okay. My, my just concern is, is back to the sewer hookup part. If they hook up because the city's project is not completed and they hook up to the other alternative down the road, can they switch and hook back up to something else if that's needed or is that in place forever? And is that a concern?
I guess technically they could change back. There's always a cost involved. The sewers that they're hooking to will be our city sewer. And we're looking at bypassing, constructing a bypass south of that that will connect both of these sewers to the same trunk main in Outville. So they could, I would doubt that they'd ever change back. I mean, just from the cost.
But it won't be a concern?
It won't affect, should not affect the capacity.
Okay.
In either of those lines.
Okay, thank you. That's my question.
Further discussion on the motion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. Motion carries. Item number five.
Morning. Item number five is thirteen PD zero five four, a final plan development overlay to allow a convenience store on approximately 1.57 acres of property located at the southwest of the intersection of Fifth Street and Stumer Road. This is for a proposed Big D gas station and convenience store. This item is on non-consent today due to a request for LED signage, which we will be reviewing here in a moment. Let me show you some slides. Property is located here at the corner of Fifth and Stumer. The Walmart's going to be located to the west here. And you should note here, Catron Boulevard is located there. Annual view of the property. You can see Catron Boulevard. The area is developing with commercial uses. The Arby's is located across Fifth Street to the east as well as Pizza Ranch. We've also recently approved a final plan development for McDonald's located to the west of the property. Site plan showing the proposed expansion of the site, or the, the proposed development of the site. The thing to notice here is the location of the two LED signs, or the two pole signs. One located there and one located here. We should also note here that the applicant has requested an exception to redo, to reduce the required number of parking spaces on the site from forty-nine to thirty-nine. You can see here, the site plan indicates that there is additional parking area located behind each of the gas pumps here. And then additional parking for the convenience store located around the perimeter adjacent to the store. These parking spaces located behind the pumps cannot be considered legally compliant parking spaces. However, it does appear that sufficient area is being provided for customers who are in line to use the gas pumps as well as the twenty spaces that are being provided adjacent to the gas station. I should also note that there are three additional parking spaces being proposed on the northeast corner of the property, actually more than three, long-term for the proposed ATM to be located on the property. So the stacking parking required for the ATM use is being provided. And as such, staff would recommend that the requested exception, reduce the parking from forty-nine to thirty-nine be approved. A little bit closer look, this includes the turning radiuses, but it also kind of clearly identifies the location of the parking and the location of the stacked parking areas. Just for your consideration. This is a look at the signage. We should note here, this, this proposed sign, the applicant is proposing two forty-five foot tall LED, um, pole signs, each with its own six foot ten inch by twelve foot LED reader board. The convenience store is located, as we previously noted, on a principal arterial street, Fifth Street, and a collector's street, Stumer Road. And in addition, Catron Boulevard located to the south is also a principal arterial street. We should also note the South Dakota Department of Transportation, which would have jurisdiction over signage on Catron Boulevard, has not indicated any opposition to this request for the proposed LED boards or for the proposed, or additional height. And the planning commission has directed staff in the past to bring LED reader boards to your attention. We should note that in the general commercial district, the LED reader board would just be permitted. The proposed existing development is located in proximity to the regional transportation corridor. And in the past, similar pole signs have been approved in other regional transportation corridors. As such, staff recommends that the exception to increase the maximum permitted height of the structure from thirty-five feet to forty-five feet be approved. And if this planning commission should so determine the, that the LED reader boards also be approved. Also signage does, will be required to meet with the requirements of the Rapid City sign code. Moving on from this, elevation of the property, depiction of what the property will look like. Some site photos, the plan, or the plan development sign posted on the property. Location of the, or a view of the intersection of Fifth and Stumer, looking north along Fifth Street. Looking south along Fifth Street, the lights there in the distance of the intersection of Catron Boulevard and Fifth Street. The developments located immediately to my right shoulder. I'll look across Fifth Street towards the additional development located on the east side of Fifth, the Arby's and the Pizza Ranch. And I'll look west up Stumer Road to where the Black Hill Center, the new Walmarts and the proposed eventual McDonald's be located at. One more view, looking across the site from Stumer Road. This is on the north side of the site, looking to the south. The final plan development will allow for a convenience store to be located on the property. The site, the layout of the site will ensure that adequate area exists to provide for the parking. And the proposed signage, based on the, the location of the developments, within a major developing trans, uh, commercial corridor, we believe that the additional proposed height on the LED signs would be appropriate for the area. And with that, staff recommends that the final plan development be approved with the stipulations outlined in the staff report.
Mr. Chair?
Vicki.
So the convenience store as a whole with the ATM kiosk are permitted uses in general commercial. The site is built out pretty tight. You've got ten parking spaces that they're asking for a reduction for, but they are showing that they could get another stacking lane behind the, the park, the, the gas pumps. You can't count those according to the parking regulations, but as we see how convenience stores function, that is the primary reason why people do go to them. And we all do stand, sometimes park in line and wait our turn. So we do believe that the parking issue is going to be addressed just by the ability to stack behind the pumps. The discussion that we need from you today is concurrence, that you agree with the reduction in parking, but the signage. We have two pole signs. The signage would be allowed in general commercial if it did not exceed thirty-five feet as proposed. The LED signage is something that has been an ongoing discussion with you folks. You want us to bring it to your attention so that you can decide whether or not that location is appropriate. So what we need from you this morning is some discussion particularly regarding the signage, whether or not you feel at the height and the LED signage is appropriate for this location as designed.
Thank you. Mr. Hendrickson has a speaker request. You want to wait until we finish our discussion, Lyle?
Yeah, I'd like to know what I have to attend to before I randomly speak.
Karen Bowman.
Thank you. I have, everyone knows I live up that, in that area. So I see all that development that's going down there all the time. And I knew there was going to be a convenience store gas station and I have no issue with that at all. I, I think that's appropriate. They probably need one in that neighborhood, a convenience store and those kinds of things. So I have no, no issue with that either. Or the parking. My concern is with the sign. Years ago, when we started developing that area, we looked at how that area was going to develop and, and what is appropriate down there. You look at the signage for, say, the dentist office, which is across the street. They're ground signs. And we specifically wanted them to, to remain that way, to kind of keep it, not necessarily a residential area, but to keep it from being cluttered and have big tall signs and that kind of thing down there. You look at the Walmart sign that's on Catron Boulevard. There's one, one ground sign that has all the tenants in there, or supposed to have all the tenants in there. They aren't all there, but that's appropriate so people know where they're going to go. To have two tall pole signs down on that corner seems to be, to me, to be an overkill. Is, that's, to me, is not necessary. Across the street, we have Arby's. It's thirty-five feet, I understand. And that's appropriate. It's one sign. It doesn't have any LED things on it at all. It's just a message sign there so they can change that often and, and know what's going on. To have the LED signage there also is offensive to me, I guess, because I look at, I look at Eighth Street and what Eighth Street looks like today. And you get one, one sign that's an LED sign and, and can change and make flashing things or whatever they're going to do. And, and it just proliferates. And now we've got people really concerned about Eighth Street. And I hate to see this corridor start that. If the signage in Rapid City was more controlled, I wouldn't have so much of a problem with it. But I've turned in numerous requests to, to look at signage that flashes, scrolls, is too bright. And our city does not seem to tackle that issue. They, they've put it off. They've, they've tried to, to do something with it and nothing seems to happen. I don't know if it's, it's ordinances that we need, punishment that we need to say, you promised to do this, we, we will comply and then you don't. And, and so you have a sign that, that, say it's flashing and it shouldn't be flashing and they've promised they wouldn't flash it. And then they stop it and then you, you get on them and two weeks later, they're right back at the same spot. So I have an issue with LED signs for that reason. I don't know that it's necessary at that intersection. It is going to be a congested intersection. Right now, there's a lot of traffic that goes back and forth through there. That Walmart traffic is just continually going all the time. And then you have Arby's on the other side, Pizza Ranch. You're going to have a lot more development out there. So I'm, I'm concerned about the fact that we have two large forty-five feet tall pole signs at that intersection. And, and then to top that off with an LED just is not appropriate in my opinion. So I don't support that signage. I think a thirty-five foot pole sign is, is appropriate. That's what Arby's is across the street. And you'll be able to see that from Catron, you'll be able to see that from Fifth Street. I don't see the need to have that extra height. And I would like to not have the LED signs. So I'm not going to make a motion at this point. I'd like to hear what some of you other folks think about that and see if I'm on the right track or I'm the only one that's against it. So, thank you.
Commissioner Skoll.
I, I think, I don't think the parking's an issue to discuss. I mean, in the past, I've, I've built convenience stores that have to have all this parking that makes. that makes absolutely no sense. So, I think that that's a reasonable stipulation that we can meet. I would agree with Karen, why two signs? You know, how many other places get two signs? Why do they need two signs here? Maybe one sign put in a more appropriate location would serve the purpose. Although, you know, I would put out there, you know, maybe we work this a little bit and allow one forty-five-foot sign as designed versus two forty-five-foot signs as designed, and challenge them to find a little bit better location to address, to find their public and to bring them in. I think along the lines of convenience stores and gas stations, this is a pretty common sign configuration. You know, in the past, we said, "No, no, no, we don't want a single pull sign that's thirty-five feet or whatever, we want a monument sign." Okay, so now they come up with a monument sign, and they say, "No, no, no, we don't want that monument sign, we want this monument sign." So, I think it's confusing to the developers and the owners of these businesses. So, I think generally speaking, there's a gas station on Elkville Road, I don't know if it's thirty-five or forty-five feet tall, but a very similar configuration, it has the LED board down low, and probably with similar types of message, but I don't think, I guess I don't find it offensive, I hardly even notice it, I just happen to know that it's there, but I don't pay attention when I drive by. So, you know, I'm thinking that this is in line with the industry. I understand, we kind of have a chance to clean up the signage in the new corridor, but maybe there's a, let's reduce the number of signs and negotiate with them a little bit would be my direction, but like Karen, I'm curious to hear what others have to say.
I support Karen and her statements, and I feel strongly about this, too. I think two signs are too many, I think forty-five feet is too high, I think we have a good program with thirty-five-foot signs. I have, I live in that area of town, too, and have no problem finding things, and I've never heard any complaints with people not being able to find services out there, and the other businesses are attractive to the area. I'm a little concerned, you know, with when we put LED lights in, that it creates more brightness in the area. It's nice to have evenings be evenings, so I'm not in favor of this idea.
I agree with the objections to the sign and would just add that I think the two-year sign process, the two-year process that eventually developed a sign code voted on by the council was in response to the citizens not wanting this sort of signage. I think exceptions to the sign code are, should be few and far between, because I really think that's exactly what the citizens were opposed to to begin with.
Question, staff. The LED sign on this proposal is compliant with the sign code? The LED sign that we're looking at here is compliant with the current sign code?
We believe the current kind of sign code says that you can have sixty-square-foot of accumulative LED signage on site, and these signs would actually bring eighty-two square feet per pull sign. So, it would be in excessive size than what would be allowed just to get a sign permit.
Thank you. Commissioner Pope.
I would like to have the map or the drawing put back up so that we could take a look at parking. Mr. Skoll's probably correct, but I would like to see where the staff would be parking, and knowing that there's a lot of congestion sometimes, especially in a new area, that when you have cars backed up, you know, to get service, you do create some kind of hazardous problem sometimes of getting in and out. So, I'd just like to see what the flow would look like, and I would also, since I have the mic, is say that one sign I think is appropriate, and probably thirty-five feet, the same as Arby's across the way.
Certainly. Just a couple of things to note about the layout of the design. You're all aware that there is a median located in Fifth Street here, there's a median located in Stumer Road here, so traffic turning off of Katron Boulevard to use this facility would need to travel on the northbound lanes of Fifth Street and then enter here. They wouldn't be able to enter at this location, this would be a right-in, right-out only. This would be full turning movements at this location. So, the circulation, you know, one facet of the circulation there. Other than that, I should also probably note that we used this to give a clear definition of the layout of the site, which has not changed, and to show the stacked parking lanes behind the gas pumps. However, throughout the review of this process, as we discussed the parking, we did come to this arrangement, which was in the first slide, which shows additional stacked parking located along, right there, the ATM parking located there. And so, if there were to be future expansion of the store, the additional parking would be located, you know, could be provided here and here. Yeah.
Maybe we could have Lyle come up and speak to us about where the employee parking would be anticipated and how they see those traffic flows working.
And maybe, Lyle, or you could show us again, since you can only exit the top curb cut in the slide, or you can enter there from Fifth Street southbound, or exit westbound. So, if I want to go any other direction, if I need to get back to the other, show me how you'd circulate inside.
If you needed to get out and return to, say, Katron Boulevard, you could use this exit. If you needed to return and go north on Fifth, you'd have to go that way.
That's correct. Show me how you navigate inside the site, say I'm at the topmost gas pump station there when I pull out.
We'll let the design team do that for us.
Perfect.
Hello, I'm Lyle Hendrickson, I'm the architect for this project. If you're going to, your question is if I'm here, I'm... Okay. You'd come back out this way, and then head out on, out towards Fifth, or head back up to Katron.
So, everybody exits the pump in the direction of the convenience store?
No. If you're going, what we anticipate, the traffic flow to be here is the last stop when you've been shopping at Kmart, or, excuse me, Walmart, shopping at Walmart, you're gonna, if you're leaving town, you're gonna come in, we hope, buy gas, leave and go out on Katron, or go out to go to Seventy-Nine and South. We don't anticipate a lot of traffic going back into town.
Well, I understand that, I think I have an appreciation for outside the site. What I'm saying is, do you have, is there two-lane traffic in that space between the convenience store and the pumps?
This is a twenty-six-foot aisle, so yes, that is two-lane traffic.
Will people exit the other way from the pumps as well?
Yeah, you could come this way and go out.
Okay, that was my question. So, depending on which side your gas tank's on and which way you're pointed, you could be either way at the pump.
This, how do I clean this slate? Yeah. Okay, thank you. This is showing a delivery of gas to the location of the tanks, which are right here. So, that line shows a semi coming into the site and then leaving the site. So, we have room to get out, either one of these tracks would go out, or this track would go out for delivery of fuel. It's a tight site, but the other question was, where is employee parking? We show right now the twenty, or thirty-nine parking spaces, there is parking along here and over here that we would assume the owners would prefer their staff to park away from the building. These parking spaces around the building would be for the people coming in to buy something at the convenience store. However, typically, convenience stores, you'll stop at the pump, and if you have to pay before you get gas, this station being where it's located, one of the concerns at convenience stores, gas stations, is the, get the gas and dash, where they'll take off without paying. So, if you have a credit card, you can pay, or debit card, you can pay, if you're paying by cash, you'll park at the pump, go in and pay, go back and fill your tank and leave. A lot of gas stations are now not going to, we're going to trust you to pay when you fill your tank and leave. So, that's why I think the city needs to consider that there is parking behind the person getting gas, because I don't care what gas station you go to, you will wait in line at the pump to pump gas. That's parking, I think we've got ample parking with, people don't stop at a convenience store to shop. They stop at the convenience store to get something, get some gas, get something, a soda, something to eat, and they're gone. There's not a lot of routine business at convenience stores, so.
Lyle, while you're up there, I guess probably, I'd like to comment a little bit on the sign issue that's come up. Several of the commissioners indicated they thought one sign would be enough. As the architect, is there a one-sign location option?
Well, if you look at this corner, you've got, oh goodness, can we go to the photos? You've got a lot of clutter with...
Any particular?
Okay, backup one, you've got stop signs all the way around, keep going. As you can see right here, we got a huge electrical boxes at the corner that kind of block the site. So, putting a sign at the corner, there's a lot of competition for what's going on. And so, we were looking at, like, our other, our convenience store, Big D's convenience store on Seventy-Nine or Campbell Street, and St. Patrick, we have pull signs at both exits, entrance, whatever you want to call it, at the corner of the property on that site. A ground sign with all the clutter that's on the ground that was put there by the development of the street, a monument sign on that corner is going to be lost by all the clutter of what the city has located there. My comment on the digital signs, you may not like this, the city would go a long way in getting rid of digital signs if they would do something about the digital sign right over here for the Civic Center. I mean, you've got a huge digital sign right at that corner that is a city sign, as far as I'm concerned, it's for the Civic Center, it's advertising, it's flashing, that one flashes, that's a huge digital sign. So, LED, I'm assuming, LED is the lighting source of the future, because it does not use all the energy. So, I think when we think of LED signs, we get a bad, or they get a bad rap, because there are a lot of them that go through the changes in brightness that can happen with an LED sign. But, you're also trying to save energy, and LED signs, just like your Christmas lights, use minuscule amount of energy compared to other light sources, so. I guess if the light or the sign is an issue that needs to be resolved, I would hope that we could get approval to submit for at least a building permit so we could get this project rolling and work out the details on the signage without holding up the project for another month while we're trying to work out a sign.
I think all the issues, with the exception of the sign, have been resolved and commented on, and you've helped us understand the reduction in parking and the circulation navigation within the site, so I think the questions that I heard commissioners ask have been resolved there. With regard to the sign, Vicky was right, we have had discussion in the past. What we have done for the last three years at least during the conversation on signs is to send this to the council. It's kind of their ordinance, exceptions are hard for us to grant with the community discussion that has been had here. The brightness issue that Linda mentioned for the neighborhood folks are conversations that were long and serious when the Walmart site was placed there, and those people's concerns with regard to traffic and other issues, brightness was one of them, and this commission in the last eight or nine years has, from time to time, discussed nightlighting as being more friendly to the environment. I will say, I don't live in that neighborhood, but I go down that street, and that is a difficult intersection, if you only visit it infrequently, to navigate. Simply, it's new, and there's a lot of stuff there, it's a big urban intersection. I am familiar with at least two of those that I'm thinking of right now in other communities, one in Sioux Falls and one in Wisconsin, where the location of the convenience store and navigation is very similar to what's being proposed. So, I don't have any problem with any of it, and my thoughts about what I've heard from questions and discussions so far is that I want to send the sign up to the council, but I'll wait for a motion. Karen Bowman.
Thank you. As far as having this approved without the signage, that seems to me, I mean, we could do that, I suppose, but they'd have to come back with a major amendment to do the signage part of it, is that correct, Vicky?
Trying to hit both goals, where Lyle's client gets a building permit for the convenience store, and as John said, that the council then could hear this for final determination regarding signage, your best option would be to approve the application that's before you today, denying the request to allow LED signage and denying the exception to the height. That would then allow Lyle to come in and get a building permit, he could also have time then to visit with his clients to see which of those two exceptions he wanted to appeal to council, and whether or not they would come in with a compromise for the one location, if they just wanted to take a run at it again to council, he would have seven days to appeal it. If you submitted an application that showed the building and didn't include the signage as currently proposed, we would sign off on that building permit, and he could then appeal the portion of the Planning Commission recommendation to the council. Carla, can he appeal an approval to city council?
I'm just pulling up the ordinance, but the website isn't working. I think that, I think that he could, could be an exception request similar to, or, and appeal an exception similar to what the council normally would give.
And maybe we could look at this as we used to, approve in part and deny in part. We approve a part of the plan development that is for the use of the convenience store with the reduction in parking, and we deny the signage package, so that he could appeal that part of the plan development. If we could just kind of get that wording in the motion, if that's how you want to go, then we'll work with Lyle to make sure that when he comes forward with, which I'm sure his clients are going to want to appeal that, and then that would allow the council to have that discussion with him.
Is that kind of what I hear from everybody, so that we can...
Yeah, I think that's kind of what I'm looking for. I was also looking at the two locations of the sign, and to me, if you have that one location where you cannot turn from Katron to go into that, if you have a sign there, and if you're a traveling public and you go, "Well, there's a sign, I'll just, there's an entrance, maybe I'll just turn there." I mean, to me, that is seems like the unnecessary portion of, if I was going to put up a sign, I'd put it where you are trying to get people to come in, and that's kind of in line with what that business has done in the past, if they've put signage where the locations are for the driveway. So, my preference would be to keep it at thirty-five feet, to have no LED and have only one sign. And I don't know if I want to put that in a motion or just to say, like you said, because I approve all the rest of it. So, I wouldn't, I wouldn't make a motion to approve this application, with the exception of denying the exception to increase the height, denying the LED, and denying two signs. And I don't know, just have one sign, and I don't know how that motion should, I don't know if I can put that all in one motion, but that's my motion. Does that make sense?
Yeah, and that's pretty, it's important that we include all of that, because the two signs are permitted as, by sign code. So, if that is a part of what it is that you're denying, I encourage you that, as a part of the minutes for this meeting and the discussion before the Planning Commission, that you validate your motion based on the fact that the overall signage for LED exceeds what would be allowed otherwise in the sign code, and that the size also exceeds what would otherwise be allowed in the sign code, so that you can differentiate between a plan development and a property outside of plan development.
I understand, and I do agree with that. I do believe that the signage is too large, the LED portion is too large, it does not meet our sign code, and...
And also, the height does not...
The height, and the height, correct.
Sign code.
Yeah, and since those are part of the sign code, and that's part of the exceptions, and the two signage, two signs or not, that's why I'm trying to differentiate, to add that to make it only one sign, and I don't know if I can do that, because they do comply with the sign code to have two signs. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. So, I'm trying to make the motion so that I'm denying the portions that they're requesting, the exceptions that they're requesting, but also to add, I just believe only one sign is necessary for that site.
So, you want your belief system in there, huh?
Yes, I do.
I second her belief system.
Well, with regard to the approval, I think your description is what we can put in the wording, and I wanted to also comment, and so, just for the record, not only do I think they need to have the council work on that, because it's a community discussion, and we understand that, but the enforcement on static signs, I don't know how many we've approved, either meeting the code or the exception, that we had affirmative statements that they would not flash, scroll, and the code only requires an eight-second deal. And Lyle, I wanted to talk to you when you were up here. That's a fairly big sign, and I understand I can get my hot dog, or I can get my big slush, or whatever, by that, but when I get to that intersection, and I find that thing's flashing and scrolling and changing every eight seconds, all I'm going to do is run into the Volkswagen in front of me. So, it is a serious concern, and so, I send that comment that if the sign code needs some kind of enforcement buzz, I know at our business, we have a very small reader board, but I make sure the people that put those messages up there do ten and fifteen second, nobody can read them in eight seconds when they're rolling and scrolling, and so, I'm lucky enough if they stop at the stop sign, and they haven't got anything else to do for thirty seconds, that they might read something that's on my sign. They truly are tough, but our people do it longer, because we think people might read it if it's sitting up there. So, whatever, if the sign enforcement people came down and talked to us and just said, "Hey, will you cut it out?", I can understand why a lot of businesses wouldn't just cut it out. Maybe there needs to be, you know, issue a ticket, and so, maybe you want to look at that part of the ordinance, where you get a complaint, you go down, and you're actually doing it. Maybe you ought to put them where their concerns are, and that's on their pocketbook. Anyway, that's my comment. I have a motion and a second.
I got a question.
And Commissioner Skoll has a question on that motion.
I got confused amongst all the conversation. So, what I'm understanding is that we're going to, we're finding a way to approve this, so they can get their building permit and move forward, which I'm very much in support of. We're granting the exception to the parking. Then, their options are that they could put up two thirty-five-foot signs with downgraded reader boards, LED reader boards, without having to go to council or having to come back to Planning Commission. Is that correct?
No, based on the motion that's before you, and Commissioner Bowman, correct me if I'm wrong, what she is saying is approve the plan development with the exception to reduce the parking, and with the revised sign package, which would allow the wall signage as proposed, and which would include one pole sign, no LED signage on that pole sign, and that pole sign would not exceed thirty-five feet, and to deny the pole sign portion of the sign package as proposed.
So, what, so that where I'm confused is what does the code allow?
The code would allow the two thirty-five-foot-high pole signs, and accumulatively, they could have sixty-square-foot of LED signage on...
And they have eighty-two or something?
They have a hundred and sixty-four.
And so, they're grossly over. Well, so what we're asking, though, is rather not to meet code, we're trying to be a lot more restrictive. Okay, I guess I disagree with that, so, that's my opinion. I think if they want to meet the letter of what the law is today, allow them to meet the letter of the law. If they want more, then have them go to council. That's my opinion, so...
And I guess, regardless if you approve it, either with the motion that's on the table, or the one that you've just identified, I would assume that Lyle's going to appeal that to council. But for the purposes of what you folks act on in the motion that we're left with in order to see what does get appealed to council, we'll need you folks to talk that out and clarify.
Mr. Hendrickson. Is the code arrangement of two signs at thirty-five feet with sixty inches an acceptable alternative to the owner?
I don't know. I'd have to talk to the owner about that, but if that's what we're faced with, I would assume that's what we would propose.
So, if you decided to meet the code, and we go forward with the motion that we have before us, does he still have to, I guess I'm asking the same thing Commissioner Skoll did, does he still have to go to council and get approval for a compliance sign?
Yes, based on the motion that's on the table today.
And how long before it would be in front of the council?
A month. And he'd have seven calendar days to appeal it, and I assume that they would, and then it would skip the first council meeting after this meeting and go to the second one because of notification requirements.
I think the piece there is based upon the motion that we have, is what I'm keying on. How we have the motion, yes, but it wouldn't, an alternative, an alternate motion wouldn't require that action, is what I'm understanding.
If an alternate motion said that the exceptions to the signage as proposed are hereby denied, however, a sign package in compliance with existing sign code shall be permitted, then that would allow him the flexibility of lowering the two pole signs to thirty-five feet and significantly reducing the LED reader board size down to what code would allow.
Would you like that option? You represent the owner today, Lyle, so...
I would probably work hard to have the owner agree with that.
Agree with denying the sign package as proposed, but approving a compliance sign package. With regard to height and LED. That's what you're proposing, correct?
Yeah, that's what I'm proposing, and I'm not, you know, I mean, I'm not this big, huge sign proponent, and I'm not trying to be difficult or disagree with other members on the commission, but what I do struggle with is when we constantly try to make, we have regulations for a reason, but when we want more stringent regulation, and we want to have this, you know, control over every little detail, it bothers me a little bit in how my thinking is, and it's confusing to owners and developers and business people. So, why'd you set this code if now you want me to follow a different code? And so, all I'm saying is, is that if this is what the code is, let's allow, you know, it is what it is today, that...
So, is that your...
Why do we always have to be more difficult?
Is that your substitute motion?
So, my substitute motion, I guess, would be to... My substitute motion would be to approve with the parking, reduction in the parking, and I think I would, would we be denying the sign package?
Denying the proposed sign package and approving the sign package in compliance with the city sign code.
So, denying the, exactly, that's what it is.
I think that's as business-friendly as we can get here. Thank you. Is there, that's a substitute motion, is there a second? I have a motion and a second on the floor. I have some lights up and discussion of that motion. Commissioner Marshawn.
Well, I can support following our codes that are in place, so that isn't the problem, but I did want to make a statement. I didn't appreciate your adding us wanting that part of town to look like Campbell Street and seventy-nine, that's all I will say.
Commissioner Bowman.
Thank you, and I also appreciate Andy's comments about, you know, trying to follow the letter of the law. I think our sign package for our community, because of the way the citizens have objected to LED signs, and it's, and I understand, you know, they are better as far as saving energy and that kind of thing, it's just that they are so abused in how that works, and I encourage whoever, council, to take a look at that again and see if they can't have some punishment, if that's right terminology, or something, so that people comply with the letter of the law. In our staff report, it does say that if the Planning Commission determines that the electronic message center signs are appropriate at this location, so, I would go along with, you know, following the letter of the law as far as what they can do, but if we had the option of saying, "We still don't believe that the electronic message center part of it is necessary", we could do that. If we do that, I suppose he'd still have to appeal that portion of it, wouldn't he? That is a...
The motion, actually, if they want to pursue the exception, can appeal that.
Yeah, they'd have to...
But we're just saying, if they don't wish to pursue the exception, then go ahead and get this project underway and do their business.
Yeah, the only difference is, according to city code, they could have an electronic message center sign as part of the, that's part of the code. They have sixty square feet, is that what you said, of that?
And we could not deny that.
We could deny, we could deny that. They would just have to appeal it.
Under the code?
We, according to the...
If the code, if the code permitted it?
If the, if the code permits it, according to our regulations, Planning Commission still has the option to say, "We don't think it's appropriate at this location", not denying them altogether, but just at this particular location. I would still like to not have that, but I don't know how much support I have on the commission for that, to do that.
Mr. Chair, I think what Commissioner Bowman is trying to say is that the city has identified areas of our town that are appropriate to be designated a plan development because of the unique quality of that corridor. In this particular strip along Katron Boulevard and portions of Fifth Street, it was deemed to be a gateway to the Black Hills and to Mount Rushmore, and all the property along, all the commercial property along this corridor is currently within a plan development designation, so that you folks could have this very discussion. My caution is, is that when you do go, become more restrictive in what is otherwise allowed by ordinance, that you cite the cause. If there's a harm or a damage that you feel would be done to the neighborhood, that you be specific with that, so that we're just not randomly treating properties differently.
Very good. I don't have any lights up. I have a, I have...
You do now.
I do now. Alderman Roberts.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. One thing that worries me, and this is a wonderful discussion, but one thing that worries me is when we start restricting our code, because somebody doesn't want something in their neighborhood, this reminds me exactly of what happened on the last city council meeting, where we had denied a casino because the neighbors had came out against it. And one thing that we have to worry about when we start denying things that are in our code is the legal ramifications of people coming back and suing us for overriding our ordinances because of our, because we don't want it in our neighborhood. I mean, of course, I don't want more signs in my neighborhood. Within a six-block area of my house, I probably have a thousand signs, and I know it is quite difficult with these reader boards and these LEDs to regulate them, because they have the opportunity of changing them within thirty seconds. I have called many of these in, and, you know, we have them around town that are a nuisance. They are a problem, because they, the only time they're in compliance is when somebody comes out and looks at them and tells them, "You need to do this", and they change for a while. And I think Karen is right. I think we have to have more restrictions and actually some penalties for the people that aren't staying in compliance. But it does worry me when we start restricting our ordinances on what we want, just because it's our neighborhood. So, anyway, that's just my two cents for what it's worth. Thank you.
Karen.
Thank you. Part of my comment on the LED is, as a planning commission, we do have the right to not restrict because of code necessarily, but because it's in that plan development, we get a chance to look at that area and what's best for that area over and above the codes, because we, that's what plan developments do. They give you that chance to zero in on that area. And for me, it's not so much that I live in that area, it's, I don't want that area to turn into an Eighth Street issue again, and maybe it never will, but once you allow someone to have an LED message center, everybody else is going to want one, because that's the way it is, it's competition. And so, that's my, that's my concern with the LED light, is if they complied with the regulations and didn't have any issue, and everybody else wants to do it, I don't see a problem, but I just don't see that happening in our community, and that concerns me a lot. So, I appreciate the motion as it is, and I would like to support that motion. I just, I just have an issue with that light for continuity, so, that's why I'll be voting no, but I think the motion's a good motion, other than that.
I want to thank the commissioners for a good discussion. Thanks for your input on this. I think the issue is not with the applicant, the issue is with the signs in our community. On the motion, which I hope you all remember, in my sense of the English language, it allows the applicant to go forward with the project with an option, either to appeal to the council on the sign package as proposed, or to meet compliance sign options and go forward with that plan without... that plan without exception from us. All those in favor of say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Posed.
Aye.
Let the record show, Commissioner Bowman is voting no. Motion carries. Item number six.
Item number six is 13 PD 58, a final plan development to allow a professional office and a residential use, property located at 1113 St. Joseph Street. Take through some slides. Property's own office, commercial district, and a planned development designation, south side of St. Joseph Street. Currently, there is a two-story, used to be a single-family home and a detached garage located on the property. It's located within the West Boulevard Historic District and is, and the primary structure is identified as a contributing building in the West Boulevard Historic District. The applicant is requesting exceptions to front yard setback, side yard setbacks for the primary structure, and side yard setback to the detached garage. Because it's in the historic district, existing building, the applicant's not proposing to expand, staff is recommending that the exceptions to the setbacks be granted. In addition, the applicant is requesting an exception to reduce the parking for the proposed use in the structure from eight parking spaces to two parking spaces. The applicant is proposing to open a, the professional office is an architecture firm, two employees, and occasional intern would be employed, and then within the building on the second floor, this isn't a very good picture of it, but one of the rooms will be maintained as living quarters. The applicant's indicated the living quarters will not be for rent, that it's for the applicant's personal use. So the two parking spaces, which we have a one-stall detached garage on the south, or yeah, south side of the property and a stall, uncovered stall adjacent to it, to the rear, should be adequate to meet the residential use need, the need for residential parking on the property, but for the, and that would be on the south side, the garage and adjacent there. But there is six additional parking spaces needed for the proposed office use. Based on the submitted, the applicant has indicated that two employees will be at the business and that appointments, you don't have a lot of drop-in clients, that it's mostly by appointment. For these reasons, staff is recommending that the parking be reduced from eight parking spaces to two. Proposed sign package, a two-foot-high by four-foot, we'll have to go through historic review once, once the applicant knows what the sign will look like. This is the existing structure on the property, legal non-conforming setbacks, historic contributing building, sign is posted, that's looking west on St. Joe, and there is on-street parking located along the front of the building, so there is that area for clients to park in for a short period of time. Looking to the north, to the east on St. Joseph Street, and buildings adjacent. Staff is recommending that the final plan development be approved with stipulations as noted in the staff report, and the applicant is here to answer any questions you might have about the business. I'd like to bring your attention to stipulation number 12, which states that the final plan development is for the applicant, and it, should anyone come in or change in use, change in business, they'd have to go through a major amendment so that we could review the business plan for that new business and be able to deem whether the parking is adequate for a new use, so.
Commissioner Pope, do you have a question?
Yes. Could you show us where the eight parking spots are currently?
There are no, there's only the two parking spots located on the property. They're asking the exception to reduce the parking from eight.
But the code says eight.
Based on the square foot.
There's currently only two.
Only two. Which should be adequate for the residential use, because there's two parking spaces needed for that living space and then six for the office. However, it's the applicant who will be using the entire structure. Living space is not for rent.
Right.
So.
And if it ever changes to be for rent, then that would change?
Would require a major amendment to the plan development to reduce the parking.
And will there be parking then on the street?
There is existing on-street parking.
And that'll continue?
I believe so.
That's allowed?
Anybody else have any other questions? Everybody understand?
Move approval of the application.
Have a motion by Commissioner Bowman to approve. Second by Andy. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Posed, same sign. There we go. Couple of items, anything from staff?
We did want to visit with you folks a little bit about a training session that we probably need to have regarding ex parte communications. We have some new members. I know zoning board of adjustment would probably benefit from that as well. What we were thinking is maybe after one of our agendas, when maybe it's a little bit shorter than it was today, we could have the attorneys come in and set aside 20 minutes for that discussion. Is that something that if we can let you know what meeting that's going to be, that you guys could kind of pencil that into your calendar, that the meeting might be a little longer? So we'll, if there are any dates that don't work for you, if you could get them to Andrea in the next week, and then we'll schedule forward from there.
So you'll survey that by email, Andrea? Get them back, okay? I have a couple of comments also. Alderman Roberts just left, but he alluded to the casino issue on which we had denied and the council had denied, and that court decision came back and the city lost, and so that was an issue and where the community, the neighborhood showed up, and we had long discussions with the applicant because the buffer was just across the street. We may have to deal with issues like that as we did with that signage discussion today, and those ordinances typically would come through the planning commission first in. So that's a, that's a significant thing for the city. I think Alderman Roberts stated it pretty good. If our ordinance is our ordinance, then we can live with it. When we try to get more restrictive, we don't, so we should spend a little bit of time with our ordinances and make sure. So I think those will be coming down, and I will hope that those are not on consent, that we'll be able to vet those well and make sure that we send to the council for their approval something that reflects maybe the wants and desires and beliefs of the community, and then we'll overlay our own system. Two other events that are significant, Brett, I want these brought, before the comp plan goes to the council, I'd like at least one, maybe two discussion sessions. There are three things in that that I think are coming forward. One, the development part of the plan, if you've all been reading that and memorizing it so that you've got that with you, has many suggestions in there for this community to move ahead in an insightful and efficient, productive manner in how the city can serve its citizens with better ways to bring things forward, better ways for you to evaluate those things that come before the commission, and better ways for the city. But many of those may have some controversy or may not have the detail you would like in the comprehensive plan, and that comprehensive plan, based on the city's past, means that nobody's going to look at it again for 20 years. So if they're going to use that for the roadmap to our city's future, I'd like to have some items set on here, some discussion specifically on those areas that are going to affect the city. Among those recommendations in there is the tax increment financing that the city has used as a principal tool for development. Their recommendation is that continues, and I've asked Brett to also lead a discussion. They're going to give us an appendix with other tools that either will require state law or the city to take a look at. It's nice to have different options when it comes to building those roads and sewer and water so that we can provide the housing that this community's going to need in the future and in the commercial areas. So I see the training is for the ex parte, and all of us need to go through that and remember why this is, the public's place to come and have a fair and open hearing on their concerns about any particular project, and we need to respect that by not engaging in those ex parte communications. And the comp plan and either items of that might be included in part of that training. I'm aware that some commissioners have travel plans for this winter, and why wouldn't you want to stay in Rapid City this winter? It's, but I think we're going to have some commissioners that are going to be gone for two or three or longer weeks here, so it's going to be really tough to get everybody into it. Andrea, I think you're going to find that we spot that. I would ask in your email if there are blocks of time that commissioners are going to be gone, that they identify those for you so that you just have that, make it easier on your calling list and scheduling for meetings. Anything else? Karen?
Following up on your conversation about, you know, what we can submit to the city council for changes to our ordinances, is there a way that we can talk about the, making people comply with the LED lighting? I mean, is there a way that we can have an ordinance that says if you do this and you're cited three or four times, or whatever the number is, 10 times, you know, something that says if you do that, there's some kind of retribution for that? I'd like to, I'd like to see something come forward that the council can look at, and so is that something we ask our attorneys to write, or is that something that we as a commission can ask for?
Mr. Chair?
Please.
So as you know, the sign code has been before the city over and over again, and it's been something that's had a lot of public discussion with two different sides emotionally involved in the ordinance as it's been adopted. There's provisions within our ordinance that if you don't comply, you get noticed, and if you still don't comply, you can be fined, and the punishment could be excessive, and that abides to any ordinance that you are in violation of, whether it's not mowing your grass or not having the correct signage. One of the things that's confusing, though, is that on-premise signage, if you are advertising, you're in general commercial and you're advertising a sign that is on-premise, it can move, it can scroll, it cannot be animated. So when you do see these LED signs that do have action to them, as long as it's advertising an on-premise, it's permitted. It's the off-premise signs that can't do that, and that seems to be a communication confusion here within the city. So just so you're aware, some of those signs may actually be in compliance. We will visit with the city attorney that does review the code enforcement issues, and if you would like, we could even have her at the next meeting to visit with you about how she is pursuing those complaints that are received for sign code violations.
That would be acceptable to me. I know that there was one item that came through as a planned development. We allowed the, the planning commission allowed that LED sign, and they, part of that stipulation was they would only have, you know, eight seconds or six, whatever it was, and I know that they did not comply, and that was through our planned development, so that's a little bit different than the standard. So I would like to have her come, if that's okay with the commission.
Very good. Anything else from the commission? Anybody want to adjourn? Or adjourned?
Thank you, everyone. Sorry.